On traditional Blackfoot Confederate conceitory. To the adoption of the. Okay, are there any questions? We have a vote.
Of this community and really in my town here. Sergeant Wright has unfortunately had an amendment that he could get out of. But he is, he is armed with, with paper. And give me the, the rundown. So hopefully able to express what here and. Questions appropriately. So my understanding is, I believe he went over Smith with. From over the past couple, couple days, also provided the, the page that I have here to. And one point. Press at the R C is recommitted to against citizen, the importance of reporting non urgent. Crimes and to help us optimize our prevention first. When I say that, I'm, I'm talking about R C P's got fairly. By applicant available Apple. And I believe it's also online webpage. I know there are a lot of things that. It's into report because it feels not worth police's time, but I can assure you that's something that we want to track of. It's something that we keep. Is one of my biggest and something I'm, I'm pushing it out. You may have seen on town over the. Sergeant and for having on the bases. Old age homes places with this year available in English and in French and also these. The, uh, brochures. So fraud takes, takes men worms. Very easy to, uh, to fall for the, a lot of times. Times it's maybe you'll have someone coming to maybe be alone saying that. On address. Cars is, is on track to meet the tablet actations. Now about at half of our target for a year in quarter one, impaired charges. Immediate roadside sanction. This is a bit. Lacking, but I find it lulls and then sometimes. Just pickups. Lately, we've been pulling a lot of impaired drivers. Pairing in its forms. So the satire that. That we're casino is crime reduction. So some of the notable drug interaction act is last. Involve surveillance of a problem prize, ongoing conduct with prolific offenders and increase the amount that we find. Is really reasonable for a drug possession charge. So what we're doing is out of what we call. These years, we're seizing the drug. Dealers. We're, we're continuing to, to, to support with them. Really share our current state of, of when it comes to the. So our rural patrols are focused for person R C P. We want to make sure. Presence at once per day in our lying areas. There, there no. To commit to, to the town hall. The school. Today, we're trying to do the present. To them, be involved in lockdown drills, safety, uh, safety talk. That kind of thing. So we're, we're looking at a, a. Me with simple time to present to their. Business in the school just to, so they know who we are and they feel that we can approachable. So if turn the. Page there, uh, there's a list of crime statistics of the, just the. Breakdown of criminal. Truck offenses. Uh, so the reductions in, in many of the numbers, uh, lower numbers. On a trend to lower crimes typically good thing, uh, traffic and the, the canate, um, controlled drugs and senses. You know, arresting them if have prints, um, if we're noticing that there are drug handoffs, that thing. Um, so cars currently down positions of the seven. Lunches that we only have. So basically we're, we're about thirty. And back. So that's about on par with our vacancies there. Um, it's easy provided that the difference is so. Yeah, I think I'll consider we're on track. For that. So in terms of arts and bastards, um, we have not. Established police positions with seven officers currently working. So there's one saw vacancy. That the member's off due right now for, for next period. We have a. So we have a member and faded joining us. In October and then sometime on October and November, we're going to be losing a member. So it'll all even out. Right now. Police. It's, it's a little tricky because our capo doesn't through. Is a pride people love to. Seeing right now, be running with a full comment again and.
I just know that people actually watch it on TV. Sounds to be handed to them. All your champion people know, key people. They can't do if they don't know about. So I, I just hope people are being harassed or they see something illegal, call police. Instead of me, for the question you didn't get to Rwanda. Anyhow, just call the police. See something illegal.
Yeah, we, uh, contrary to possible, but believe we are not watched. So if you don't call us, we might match it. Yeah. Any other questions?
Uh, thank you so much for all you. We really appreciate it. Tough job. Um, hundred percent a tough job. Um, my first question is a. Is see it continually. We are not served. We just. Have enough. It's like always or two order. This seems to be the norm you said is because of deep. Oh, and them knowing through the numbers, but the phone call I get mostly for residents. That are pardon from this day, kinder areas. Make this burn. It's been crazy amount of, um, of people on the side. Box passed out and different things and that is struggle. And, and yes, uh, councillor. That went, of course, you see things, see some passed out, call the ambulance. Obviously, M V B's are all good. Has there been an influx this summer that you found or?
Um, for me, it seems about on par. I don't have the exact number. Uh, actually I do have some. Be in the liquor and alcohol act here. Just gonna send. Yeah. So, so yeah, no, we are actually up. We had the last year in twenty. We had twenty liquor. Is this year we're at thirty five. So a steep percent increase. Um. Folks we deal with, like, we're not charged. We, when it comes to be drunk in public, we have options. We can give a ticket or we can put them in a cell. With the bill that we were typically down. Limited, we'll get paid and eventually courts will just withdraw it. So. We prefer to give someone a nice place to sleep where they're, where they're safe elements. They're, they're not going to get up or robbed. So, um. Pretty, there's that flex. The people that were asleep in cell for eight hours and releasing.
So. When you were going up Main Street and you were talking to businesses that you said earlier that you were doing, you also, you were talking to them about, you know. Isn't broad as thing. What brought the fact that I see. Problem. Don't be of to cost because the businesses on, I mean, are the ones that are seeing things and are. Bull is them to call the police.
No, absolutely. Um, I, I can't speak for the, uh. Pain worse than right and corporates out there. When I'm in line of work and dealing with, I'm always encouraging them to please report these things.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to, um, come with what councillor Brown. Saying, questions related to. People on Main Street. Aviation, you see new faces, more people there than we've had past years. I've had citizens talk me about, just seems to be. More, more of it, more people say past year. They used to, well, at the same eight, is it the same forty?
You know, it feels to me like there are more, but at the same time, we've, we've lost quite a few that, that have lost away. I, I'm, it's. It's a hard thing to measure as they congregate in different places. Does seem quite busy. Um, that stretch over by, by the card house, um, seems to be. A, a big spot this year.
I was gonna ask, it's not so much maybe for Jeff, like where are we at that crime. Was that, we're gonna do something in that alleyway or. Where did that?
So thank you. I'm next meeting. Uh, councillor Burton, who's with us really in the mayor and I and Lior met with the sergeant and the corporal last week. We have recommendations. Out of that meeting that I'm hoping gets quite for next. But I'm hoping it's on very near agenda, but there's some recommendations coming from that committee mayor relative. The crime prevention environmental disasters as well. So I hope to have that in council as soon as I can.
Had we not like applied for something? And it was denied.
Councillor Jen speaking. To, yes, the answer is, as we did a, and. I don't know if Constable Morris will remember the program. There was a, there was a crime prevention program. I don't know if it was through. Same O's escapes me when they, that they seize stuff and then they still, and they pull people alive. There's a dent every use. Um, would a program of crime prevention through our mental. I mean, it didn't pass. It wasn't successful. So I, I was really personally with our meeting. Last week have some concrete thing moving forward that I think so. Understand this obligation, Sarah, pick it up for just a little bit. I'll sort of discuss it soon.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, the only thing that I have is the vacancy. Uh, groups, main street. Are they basically peaceful?
For the part that be. Well, everyone's all entitled to. Violent, usually violence is being themselves. Sometimes there, there can be aggression, uh, towards, towards citizens. Um. A lot of the gun. Rights are calming down and kind of the new. They're coming seem to be a more docile. So I think the overall rate of violence is, is decreased in my view at least.
Thank you. Any other questions? We really appreciate your, uh. Report, Constable Morris, and may look good to the extreme.
Thank you much. And I. Just like they, I appreciate the, uh, porta potty and the bench that have been set up by the, the TD Bank. Think that's a good step.
Great. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you.
Hey, next on agenda. Have an allocation, uh, click, click here. From, uh, sort services, uh, concerning, uh, recycling, uh, of. Issues in, uh, Carston.
I pressed the conversation a little bit. Um, so we have. So too tight as a, welcome Amy. Um, I asked Brooke and Immy to come with us tonight as Brooke and I. Met a number of times over the summer and he really appreciates this man. Program on behalf of town. Not only incredibly affordable program for. Recycles, but it provides, um, some work for their clients and supporters, which is meaningful. And so we have nice. Kind of reciprocal relation. What cycling industry changing, cause of. That's a service. Noah's head is broken. Mary was eating that. She's over cyclo. And so I have met on a cave and we're just running in number. In my opinion, going to require a shift in how we're managing recycling. And I don't know what that shift looks like. Talk to you, I was thinking Brooke gives good. Some challenges facing. And then I'd like to be part of a bigger conversation at our next meeting. Next C W, where we can talk about, as we look at budget for 2024, how we want to move pro. And I will qualify that saying really. Cult discussion adds the entry doesn't know where it's going. So it's very difficult. For us to forecast this industry because it's such an industry in flux and we see large urban municipalities banning. Recycling program together, see is dumbed down, going. And financially, buildings have been fractured, investing a lot of meat. And so it's typically. Fusing is what the industry trend is. One thing I'm sure we'll talk about, one thing we know for certain is there is a lucrative mark for anything you recycle. Anymore. That's for sure. And I don't know where it's over time. But I just wanted to get context that what I've approached bears some of the things she's with on a day, month, month, week. Issue where we're finding shortfalls in our program that are leading to big challenges and we'll come to you. We're not sold the night and you did that. Get back and have. Thanks for the preface at councillor Ensign and you can go. There.
Hey, thanks. Can you continue?
Um, so basically I started off with Joe. A list of currently recycled Carson. So we cycle board. Plastics, paper, plastics. Clothing, shoes for third world countries as long as, well as house items. Basically anything with a core. So we cycle all of that up the building by Redford. I have. And in the last three years. If you would like to do a copy to look at for yourself. Yeah, I have, I have a few. So there's those.
Thanks.
So in 2020, uh, we were. That, um, are. A hundred and seventeen point three tons. And so that sold. And that went up in 2021 to two hundred and seventy three eight four. And. Last year because could not get rid of our. Which are the recycles card. It's been very difficult to get rid of. I don't know if any of you have driven up there, but it is a stack among stacks. So the. Days, but they're sort of. Associate getting cycles they need though. The rising of everything is now playing a factor. We process it how. Process our recycles. Uh, we have company that we use, Trail, who is one of the only company that I've read, like. That I've showed that linked our cord or. Multiple others who is, I know the cardboard outside, they not want it. They're. Not interested if we say we will give it to you free or we will just whatever. Typically they pay you for it, but they won't. Not for us.
And isn't being of the other being.
As a base aside, uh, the moisture content increases. It gets bleached and, uh, rodents. So thinking there, it really, really deases the value of the. Um, we have trail get it. They take thirty thrills a time and right now the cost to have that done is seven hundred. Three dollars. So that is pretty substantial. We have over, over two hundred and fifty. Else on our lot. Talked them multiple times. Right now. Down to four hundred dollars and that's just paying the deal to, to get it from here to left.
Excuse you, is that for bad for load or?
For load. So for seventy, sorry, for thirty three bills.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it went over two. Fifty.
Um, so two raw materials that we have, uh, some of the issues that we run into. This paper, um, there's not too much problem except it's organs. And being Alberta, we do get it some snow times. Um, it developed and. Um, so the product, we haven't ever turned away from that paper. That is a fact. That could be in the future. Uh, for glass to be accepted, it has to clean, clear and also label free. Right now that. Not happening. Um, all the glass that we work cycle as a. Is, um, being the trap thrown in the trash as we get to. Bridge to waste conditions. Um, and we are also paying, the town is paying disposal based off the weight of that glass. Um, that's also to be in labor free. So again. Not as happening, um, but we're actually still collecting our tin as. Right now. And then for plastics, we only, it's hard. So we use plastic at this recycling center. And they should also be clean when they're recycled. Some are, some aren't. So the. Have to sort out plastics hand, make sure that the plastics are the. Being bailed.
Um, I'm going to wind over cardboard again, just it being outside. Moist content. They just turn us away. We have. But it easiest, we're starting to get rid of, uh, we're on our face. Is probably the easiest to get rid of. There are a lot of, you know, copper and your silver and like all that kind of in there that they break them. Also the company that we use ship is great. Always, always very happy to get our stuff. Um, shipping. Also easy. Third world doesn't do this are also very. Um, our most difficult one really is our, our cord, which if you look at that sheet, that is our highest. Produce footage. Product that we are. What is cost of cycling? Recycling has been marketed, marketed globally as a responsible thing to do. People have. Some to the responsibility, any residents in their town take it very slow. Torches taken on commitment, recy contract variously. Two thousand six, want to continue to work the town of Carson and hope is a way to evaluate cycling. It's mutually beneficial. For both you and us.
Hey, thank you councillor Brown.
Thank you. Appreciate coming. Good job. Um, this is, I'm not, this is a Brookton objection. So. The cost of this is coming in diesel and making a couple hundred dollars, baking a couple hundred dollars on it.
So my understanding we get is kind of. Great.
You're getting your Whitver credit on this mountain. Revenue for some cardboard for them.
So I guess my question is, is not, is it better for. Town for us to take it to Lethbridge? Would that. Would the costs us to take it to.
Um, so we haven't done a big analysis on it. Two things come to mind. One is we have. Like a C trailer to haul that quantity. Um, we would probably be able to. Fifty. We just snuck it there with the time. So pending. Do you know how much bales?
Thirty thousand pounds.
So yeah, we could actually probably haul fourteen, fifteen mils at a time. Um, plus then you have staff for three hours. Probably two an hour. Probably not. Be honest, because we need.
Thank you.
Oh, councillor, uh, Burton, who on Zoom list.
There you go.
Yep.
Question, uh, preface the comment. So I'm on solid. And we've discussed. Thing at, one of the assumptions made and I want is our. Our sin was that more pull. Recycle if A, they were educated regarding it and B, it was facilitated. Other words, it easy. So you make the comment that all the. Feel about bringing up and, and you know, think we're. To the, to the garbage to meet a missing piece of education. And, uh, make me think perhaps we're right, but I, I want to know your comment. Think that's a big point. You just, there's. And see and take our system work. Better. Then secondly, is there anything in particular from a, make it easy point of view. The town could do or you could do. What they want to do is recycle. We provide them with the blocks, the green box or we could, you know, I don't know. You, you tell me. So that's my question.
Yeah. Um, so not so much we. The problem with the town is lesbian, you know, for. Postpart. Um, it kind of gone down a little bit, but the decision to throw away the glasses from us is the facility. Lethbridge connections who they just don't want to for some. They're throwing away. So not even a glass, not. That's the problem. It's just, what do you do with the glass? They talked about putting it to.
I wasn't. They ask what problem is, can I say, did we, are the things that we very educate. Resident about that would the whole process. Words by new that mightn't had to be labory. I might, I, you know, if most of our people. Buy in constructually to the idea of recycling. We to live, you mean like, I mean, do you get. Education problem with the resistance that we could help.
I mean, I. That that is a possibility. Are you asking for recycling in general or glass?
Thinking.
Okay, yes. I do think that. Reservoir community could benefit from learning what we actually can and cannot recycle. That a lot of people look at our plastic. We do not accept plastics. We do accept styrofoam. We don't have the infrastructure. To hold things too poorly, doesn't later.
Councillor Green.
Just want to go to. Board from just so I understand what you said. So the, we've got two hundred and fifty bales of cardboard sitting there is that there is no. At front. So and to release. Eight. Uh, it's to me like we don't. To be doing this inside a warehouse where that might be a session, maybe for it of, but so now. You're not getting revenue all from, from cardboard because you're just stacking it up from it. Pretty soon be able to, I stole it this morning. I'll get you on a cardboard. Okay, thank you.
And I. That in a dark, they're not even taking cardboard. So the trailers not there. They don't want it.
I want to speak to all councillors. Fan agree with the certification component to compound that. One of the things. Want to speak for you, but I can't hear. One of the things they don't want is hundreds more ton anything coming to that building. So these constraints, if we want to a blue. Pick every given recyclable. Dear Brooke and Amy, you're going to wave the white. Pick every one of the recyclable, dear broken aim, you're going to wave the white flag and say, we're out. On another tractor. We can't, you know, can't handle more footage, especially on assorted. Which we could work through, but that doesn't necessarily. Answer for them is an organization right now, is it more? Was a problem. And so this is why I say we want to have these conversations. What can we take? That, because you hit it on the two councillor Granger. If we're going to store. Hundred plus. Reports on giving time, some square footage.
Yeah, I mean, know what the session is, it was an object, you might do it, but money is an object, you guys in. Of your contivability, but also for our terms of providing.
So those are things that. Not create any frustration and discussion we've been. Or broken, and we talked him, is what they didn't want, is to make this easy, so they got more. There, where they can be, and we. Want to push that, or at least we have to get a different way to do it if we end up with more footage.
Councillor.
So I have my question to all of them, okay. Is, what do you suggest? Whether, we're not the only community that's got this cardboard. Help me, what do you, what do you think we need to do?
Basically, it comes down to what do you want to spend? It's, right? Recycling is already done, what's the point of putting in all that? Or the other way around, I may even be into a man in the back.
And councillor Burton, well, is to if I. Because a landfill can only take so much per year of tonnage per cell. And then we fund, because we. To divert the excess to leverage and government make sure that fight for. Not respecting the tonnage per cell for facility. So for us is an extra issue. Is now million dollars investment to the new field.
There's really no institution in my opinion.
Any other questions?
My question is basically, Jeff, is do we, there's stacks of cardboard that no one's taking, how do we get rid?
Councillor, so with two options, um, I brought ours to invoice. Paper trail, the one we pay to have them take, and we say we give five grand and take much as easy for five grand, for example. But this was, uh, that we built.
Depending on week, so on like a really busy week, we're probably. Play around eight and.
We have ten more of us coming out the other end every week, right? And so the other thing, and I'm not. The other thing come up in the last, that's what I was going to say.
Uh, Mayor Cronin.
There is so an option. I don't know, maybe worthwhile looking into waste energy. Is there a region? Would be interested in.
Or if I. I'm fortunate, so what council is she wanting? On additional hundred ton, two hundred tons, so, well, the answer is that me, this isn't a partnership. Just know I've committed that if that ever comes, the case, we'll work with them to help find meaningful program client. If they just buy, I don't know, looks, we would always be able to. For what they do, and I'm suggesting that this ends either, but we've had. Quite frankly, that if council chooses, we're going to do a pickup ground blue bin, we want to get to four hundred tons of cardboard. Then that staff and facilities that sort service. There's still partners on some of them, there's going to be some additional. Infrastructure including people there in order to make that work.
Councillor.
Do you know what our neighboring communities? McGrath has a behalf by number three, rather than this.
So I actually had, uh, William reach out to. Communities in the region, um, McGrath essentially doesn't have. So the SASH program also is involved. Level, they simply, they bought to eat for one of these companies to come get it all. Um, so they just, they just set that aside and, and have really minimal. Misting in bath, and then the company comes in. Okay, uh, we feed them to haul, and those are things we look at, we. As a town, council, we have a discussion, we have to every all the. Maybe we're still taking glass, for example, and we still take everything else, but we get rid of the logistic collection of glass. Glass is not best one for our support services to be handled, simply from a safety point of view, too, we want to be dealing. So we have to have some discussions around what we encompass. Many entities are limited, uh, menu of what they'll take, so they only take two or three things, period. Now we'll. About, we have a community spending more on recycling than our solid. In total, they don't manage a recycle. So that's expensive, it's greater than all their solid waste, all their adult waste collection. Offensive, that counts to be a very fat community, so I'm not saying it's right or wrong, it's just. Is what it is. So this is really offensive, we've been so lucky. Years, we have really honest contracts, what services to do this, if we that in the private. To contract this to private sector goes the company for certain, no different than our general friend here. So those are things we'll. Only bring to you a little, we're continued of, of. That well, uh, but, but, uh, we have lots to talk about still.
I think that is probably a misconception amongst residents that you want. The recycles because you have trailers designated for. As card and whatnot, and so thinking that off. That you want us to dispose of glass and cord and paper and whatnot, and so I think it's. The occasion, uh, thing that.
Well, in terms of, we do. And that kind of volume that everyone can have, so current. Human touches manageable parties, all right, and that's okay. We just hit a strange place in history where. Market for it, and the logistics disposal have become so complicated, it wasn't an issue five. Years, a lot of companies looking, uh, but we don't have that.
Certainly.
I was just going to say, did COVID play a part in? Like, people junking their houses and you're getting stuff, and now the market's not there, and then. Like, because I just see, like, starting, remember, I don't. Twenty, come back, so, it'll kind of end because of COVID.
Yeah.
So councillor.
The last one back to cord, so. If the curve was dry, if we were able to do that indoors and, and, you know, the quality. It wasn't, I'm in it with the turks, etc. So we have a thick world, you got market for the cardboard, who gets the revenue from that? You do?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so can't get sell our boards as the case right now, so you're actually getting. Revenue, you might have, correct?
Are there any other questions? Okay, we appreciate you. And bringing us a slowdown on recycling and, uh, they'll. Do it, but, uh, sure, indeed, uh. Appreciate coming, being so well paired and very knowledgeable, appreciate that.
Thanks.
Okay, our, uh. Our delegation has said. Okay, so we'll move on. Uh, just a little bit until, till they arrive. Uh, we need a number for then, the adoption. Menace, uh.
Promote your adoption. Six thousand twenty-two P C, will you?
Okay, any questions or comments to it? Okay, all in for. Okay, the, uh, next is, uh, five. A, holiday review committee items, and, uh. Bleach will, uh, go through each of the items with us from the.
So over the course of a few. Couple of recommendations, and so I'm looking, obviously, at the resolution. I have the R F D that we have in the pack to actually prepare the twelve, um, because we don't do R F D for the council. I want to show you, but I didn't show you what was. And if there are any comments for now, Friday, we do this in general. See, I'll just turn, obviously, all ears, obviously, all ears. Um, so what we have is. Is a few ups and moves, all of us to buzz. And include, uh, let me go through here, so. So, we had committee, also seen in N B third, proposals incorporated into the committee by law. Was created, I think, about a year ago, we did that, I love proposals. There, he did this schedule that records. That is a law, and we are opposed. That's get to the long, will it too? And I will bring, and I know I've worked already. There I have over a hundred pages of new documents relative to the electric. That we can do, count under administrative policy. And electrical, so I, we'd like to move that to administrative policy. And other than that, we have to the investment policy, council's feedback. We have to call to the, uh. Sorry, which was, development. Protocols, we've used a couple of those in municipal negotiations, and I think I hit on. Everything in package that we have, we try to like. Do things exist in season, hello, the bum and. Contain only parts where. Everything feel.
For just a second, so I apologize if I'm asking, I shouldn't have needed to ask, but Jeff, you touched. On the tax collection, but the, you know. And.
So, yes, sir, that's specifically have that in. Next, I have the agenda, because Jill's will speak that, she drafted it.
Okay, any? Gens or constis? Okay. So there will be a discussion on it, and, uh, because we can't make decisions, does mean we'll, uh, deal with it. Sure, meaning then.
Bring this package back to future meeting for formal option.
Okay, thank you. Um, I see that, uh. Dr. Parks here, are you ready to, uh, give your petition, or? Six?
Wait, I'll see, councillor. Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, uh, moving on then to the. Uh, the exponential penalty for all graph, five E, if.
So if I could, so Jen, if I could have Jill come up and speak to the. This, uh, first thing on, somebody had. This was legacy in a.
I didn't quite expect that, but, um, so this.
I swear I told you, I'm sure.
I have an odd D in your package, just. Some context, what I was, as looking at doing this by law, um, and it can go to a council meeting, so it can be made on it. So council wanted. Uh, because we have a number of tax penalty waiver lists, to look at some way to deal with those. Or sign a form, in at, oh, the. Just something to be on by law, um, and just a policy, we have, um, formal, um, teeth. Yes, if you were our ability, the bylaw format, deal with. So in that route, have a. By of, but it's D with taxes, that it felt best to put them all. One, and deal with all the thing together. So that's what the bylaw is, a tax pains bylaws, takes care of. All the information on how we did our tip program, uh, specifies that our interests, that council make a motion every year to. It's, it's a bylaw, talk out a. See, we have for what we do if, um, any of the assets change, then thirty percent, that how we would. That instead of being policy, I've put into this as a, um, by law, so that's, that's how we deal with it. And then also added in, um, some. Did you see in here, that's highlight. What possibility might for, um, waive a penalty, so get a waiver. Request to waive a penalty of the life first, and this is mostly based on, um, what Lethbridge has, they've got by law, and we follow. Their program is, we. We mimic it in our program of offers, so this is the wording that they have had in. That I, I put there, and you can change dates, you can change the, the parameters on that, but that more of what we were looking for from council to. Does that work? What would you like to, on?
So just one question first, so, uh. This bylaw, it's, uh, passed, if we have it, then this will prevent, um, kind of the. You know, people kind of busting, um.
Thing, and can would then get those into them directly to. Bring into nice.
We asked them, that part.
Seventeen A, see the lighted for fifth, so Leth had. Remember, that they have to sign for tip, that can cause a bit of a problem on our. Tip, we start in August. So that section two is trying to say that all previous monthly months. Your August and December, that would have missed if November. To, um, the request, paid in. Prior to the first of October, so they haven't to look over to pay that, and then for Thursday, the next time we tip. So they also got able to take, um, October's, and they have to make sure they maintain and stay on the tip program. Through what, me, uh, and one year. Kind of wave.
And councillor, Mayor Cronin.
I'm just going to say personally, I think. And the by thirty's cuff would recommend it. In order to make your life easier. Make complete the tip. That's I think.
Councillor Henry.
I was just going to, no, we were talking who. If I have to think waves, this, anyone, is there specifics in this, or, I've never read through it, I couldn't. Any, that's like, okay, screwed up, or I'm late. Want to get this, anyone can apply for.
Yes, so we don't necessarily budget for the tax penalty revenue, um, after. Why, we want people to get taxed paid, and it's even better for us pre-pit, so if they want to on the tip and stay on program, at least. That's for your discount, if you want it to be more than yours, the one is good, um. And they can have that waived.
Like, we've had you that, I was a day late, I forgot, and it's like, sorry, but, so this is a way for them. To get it reimbursed.
Yep.
However it's going down, so.
When is a? Multi occurred on July first or up to fifth?
July first.
July first, and, okay, and let me get this right, you, you reimburse it, but not until. The following year, right? And can I take, take any or add it on to their? Tax, right?
So I see working, so if the, um. If came, they didn't pay July first, they get a penalty of a couple hundred dollars. They come in, they make an application, say, I want to have this. Waived, sign up for tip, they stay on tip, go through, every month they. Take that.
Okay, enough counsel.
This is, is kind of sort of two cases we had, really just related. Yeah, so if somebody will, the dog ate my checkbook, and I don't want to go on tip, tough luck, they got it, right?
Got it. I mean, do you have counsel, do you want to set condition in there? I think this.
Well, you're only. Does it want tip, they're gonna.
Uh, councillor or coroner.
I just would like to make a cup, thank you for looking into it, and yeah, new. Budbridge moth, and I'm appreciative of you, Hannah. Search to. That policy, I think is fair, and allow a little bit. Away into situations that sometimes difficult to deal with.
So I wonder, does it have more discretion or less? When I read it, I wonder if it does give council discretion, so, you know. I made a comment on those applications that it would probably be extraordinary when we. Offer gifts on the penalty waiver, I guess the word. Rather than I forgot her, you know, I got my answers, except somewhere, you know. She was in an accident in the Osborne Sec, cannot fit her, or more to certain where they couldn't. Think about it, they could have been there, and if you have this policy. Do I lose the ability as a council, do we lose the ability, council, to offer any and see? Extraordinary circumstances that they can be from us. We structure though that we gain that. And tougher against extraordinary circumstances, but they avoid all of that. Coming, council, all of that, sign up with tech, just saying, do we, do we lose our? Discretion in this process, or do we retain?
Comment. Well, we're not really cutting them, they're just paying it over a longer period of time. If they can't get on July 1st, they come and talk us, if I have every. Have to pick sooner or later, and this just have an option to take over the year to do it. Anyhow.
I would say that council through MGA has. Council or way of tax at any point in time, but feel comfortable with something in here, if there was any circumstances. Council can still address this, I think this was more to allow or prevent a number of. Case from coming to the administration, just deal with it, and have since say, there's an option for where you want to go, but. They still want to say, no, I don't want to want tip, and okay, you can make quest down, so if something outside. Of extending circumstance there.
Okay, councillor Gray, and then certainly do.
That's their way. We had to screen under the MGA.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that how this is written. Prevent that, we can make it clear in here that council have a final say. And can do and can.
Councillor answers councillor's question, so, um, Dave. We still have ability, the dog ate my checkbook, now that's not a good excuse, but if I was in a traffic accident, I was in some care. Trying to pay my tax, we might consent, and we have that ability, so my question was going to be, so for the two previous. Cases that we had, that that really spoke all this, there was some verbiage in. In the package that said that we could be looking giving those, and I'm not opposed to that. Because what you've done makes certain sense to me, but even. By law, that was in effect in the last tax year, so what do we do with that? I mean, do we have ability for?
They have, they have effectively followed what this is to allow them to do, because they both signed up. The P, so if council wants it to be retroactive, then they would.
Well, that would be an over your thing, dude.
Yeah. Okay, great, um, Jones, again, I echo what the mayor. Said, I really appreciate the work Delight put into it, the research, love your search. Really appreciate that, thank you so much. Okay, I see that our delegation. Is here, and so we invite Dr. Boyd Clark to approach. Podium with the Pickleball Association.
It's not up there. Decide not, I tell you, dude, all right. Gooding and apologies for. Are out, but really sorry, and thanks.
Welcome you all.
Thank you. This is, this is ball, Carston and Cape Pickleball Association, um, this is, it's late. Night, so they moved their league start to six third, and this is even every. How many are signed up that aren't here right? Twenty-nine league alone, so there we go. Uh, so, um, my name's Clark, I'm the president, Cornell is our president. We just, this, we're at our annual meeting, and he has some other commitments, he's in Vegas, I think, I don't know if he broke now. Doing okay, but, so, um. Go. That is a good sign. We're, we're an official nonprofit, um, we have been playing day through the summer. At on the course, and through of our members, we have offering instructional sessions and. And we are not exclusive, there's membership. Joint, um, Kat, go, you're what's that? What you want, you're the.
Was invited to go to Regina Nationals, and my partner who invited me is from. St. Albert, and she was willing to come to Carston to practice, and I said, sorry. It's in, courts are terrible, so, so we told to that, to meet to practice, to go, and I got there, we did well, but my mixed partner, we both.
At what level?
3.5.
No, at what country level? It wasn't just Carson.
Oh, no, oh, it's Canada, there was 600 players there. Yeah, so it was great, and I, you know. You come cards to practice, the courts are typical, I wouldn't want in. But you still want. Yeah, but I'm a member of the, must be a couple of. Go there today, so I'd be here with my lady because of them. Want to get this hard, but we don't. These that can.
Old champion, her level. A bunch of different levels, ability, your rate based, your tournament ability, so. The platform, Cep grant, through our vehicle of our nonprofit, and we got, thank. She wrote that up, and we got, as you all submitted, and I, it's out of town. Reserve funding, something to do with that, and I think it was 90,000 that Jeff. Sorry for the informality, this is a media, so we can kind of be free and formal, right? What's your line for, isn't it? Yeah, I'll thank you for this, I'll be here tonight to. To give you some advice on how to do two things, so Build It Right once. And number two is make it properly, um, so on the Build It Right idea. Have assisted, and Jill met with Craig and Randy, so town employee and Craig. Some adjust, there was initial thing of building the courts east-west, and there was flexibility, and said, okay, well, let's do it north. For, and because they're east-west, they did it wrong, you can't, you get. Did by sun and don't play there in the morning or evening, which went a lot of play, and the other thing that would advise. On the Build It Right concept is internal thinking to prevent, so if you're gonna do it, do it right, do it the first time, means. Me, so let's, the right amount to do it right, is thinking, and the third idea, Build It Right idea. Is to make screens, has wind screens, vents in them, so that this blasted thing. Blow the whole over, like I did in 100 windstorm, we had that took 12 of my offlers as well. But we have other ideas as well in this, and this concept I'll show you and illustrate. The idea of nets, or the, you know, and then the small fences, or low fences in between. Courts, and at the back, inner baseline, have slightly high fences, and. That smash or just like tenant. That's very not deluxe facility, ours is a plan, which would. More like this, and this is what's come up from Randy and Jill and Cornell. Of the advice that we give you as a council, you can, our courts face north-south, and the pick. The smalls, the six of them, and the tennis is the big one that remain as a full. Court, have a pickle court overlaid on it, the best, the best thing about. This is that you're not a free by sun, there's a lot of court, so right. All three courts that we have, and gotta give kudos to those members of Pickleball Association that painted. And a premier, uh, previous councilman painted the courts as they now, and. To the equipment, so that we have some courts to play, and thank you for that. Build It Right concept, the red line illustrate exterior fence, which would be of height, which is 12. The baseline, this is just the dotted black line, tall. As well, but not as tall as the full 12 feet, and then turn off, seeing as just, oh, just four foot, and then. Be two gates, a gate on the right, on the east side, and a gate on the west side, and you can see, I've put it in there. All fence in between the tennis court and the six pickle court, and that leads us into the. Concept, which is maintenance, see, we have, you can see, interested body. And we like to help maintain this recreation facility. Come to the slide and illustrate all our creation facilities, I can think, I know that. Very qualified people can probably come up with us, we'll go through every line, I'll point out. That every facility that is either supervised by clubs or a staff member on half. Or is restricted access, remains really good condition for a long time. Like skate park, had no supervision, no restriction access, no club involved. I don't remember, but it was just a few years, became dilapidated, and now it doesn't exist anymore. Travesty, it was vandalized in its first off-season, gumput in the chute, don't. That's happened again, hope it never does, the soccer park, it's the open. Except I wanted to use the toilet there on Monday evening with my kids, I probably wouldn't, because they're law, and so they should be, there's. Is perfect, but the item that is, the softball dimes. Soccer park, and they take a lot of labor to maintain, mowing costs that. Beach volleyball court, well, I don't know if there is a beach volleyball court in town, there is, you got. Bill many years ago, it's not usable to this day, and the tennis courts, you could say. Haven't received a lot of lump care, not a lot of money, I think in, my brother and I. Play when I was a youngster, and that's a long time ago, um, I was, I'll talk to one of the council. Station of this, they said, oh, yeah, right, yeah, that was my brother and I back in the days, that's 30 years ago. And there was swimming pool at this court, but since there hasn't been a lot of money invested. So this is a real prime opportunity to use money and do it right the first time, to help with that. As I realize, this is a small one, we don't have a huge space, um, we propose that. Some county pickleball association, um, go back to, thanks, Jeff. With, no, the next, you're correct, yeah, that we partner with the town and. Create a written agreement, maintain facility, and by doing so, we would. By supervision, and we would get, we would take, so what destroys tenant court and an asphalt court? Water, standing water on it ruins it, no question. Leaves, branches, twigs that sit on asphalt, they. So we would clean, whether you notice, but there's a lot of people. Things right behind me, oh dang, I'll pay for that one later, but what I'm, there's a lot of interested people that. Courts be the best, so we would take our leaf blowers and our brooms and clean and take care, but off and on. Change, we would protect the act by restricting us to some. The courts, and just the court, just two things, and that. Six pickleball courts would have restricted access, gate that would also. Sign it to explain how to get in, who you call, if you want to. How you book, the big tennis court would have a single pickleball court, could have two pickleball nets on there, um, there's. Room, um, that would free access, open access, any do it, and we still maintain that sweep, clean. Nets down, so forth, but this pickle court be listed, and. Give referred acts out, now let's go like two more ahead, thank you, to. And then the next one, thanks, so in this, we would do these. By, by doing this, we would be a club, a, with a membership that. Get charged to be a member and have. Up the facility, we'd have a facility that's grand, perfect. And probably summer games with six courts, so it would be a great thing for putting our. There's three things, and I probably need to tell you this, you're experts in what tennis need, one of the. King's paths, the other one is pickle, the fastest sport in North America. Those benefits that we get out of club, and because we'd be partnered with you. You don't have to have increased cost or work on your overworked crews. Another facility.
Can just go back to your model, you have the. Six, and you have the two, the house, two, two of them, so. Would all be restricted, the general.
No, and this is. This is a proposal, so decision is council about restrict courts, in my mind. I want open access something, yes.
Okay, so to go back to your six. That's a public, it's a land, and so I'm trying to. The optic would be in town, a space, my frame of mind. To see six area restricted to the general public, all the. So one could not be possibly ex. Where those will be reserved for the pickle or. Where you get it, sometime. There's a term to keep it pristine as you wish, but I'm wondering. If a mixed model can, can possibly do this.
Question, and in the ideal world, I think mixed model would be perfect, however. Where people are playing, and children can, and. Hanging on nets and getting their bicycles on court, and essentially creating prim aware of this. that we already have. So they asked them after watching, they can just do it for a sec. Leave, they didn't. And they asked them, please, and they didn't leave. And they told them essentially a very rude word, leave them alone. You can't tell what to do. Um, oh, yes, could be and that would have some merit. But what a, what a benefit club that has to maintain facility. People are ruining the facility day night that we can't monitor or, or control in any way. So if I have to go into that every time I use it and it, because other there and it. And that's gonna make me say, well, this is a deal. Why would I want to do that? Our members are all this work. And we're not getting, they get our time, but we're not getting the full benefit of having a, and be restricted as you can't use it. It would be, if you want to use it, then you cut this number and because people are veiled through the day, would come open it and you would pay a drop in. It'd be very amenable because every on that table I showed you, all the other facilities have ease. So this would be just like the swing, but we're not staffing 24/7, can't afford to do that. They'd come down, open it in advance, say on Monday, group want to use it, we're not going to charge because there's 20 members, we're gonna charge, charge them with a couple of the features that you guys think and that we like. And somebody then lets them in and then they're done. So us for sure is not restricted, it wouldn't be like prohibited. Would be restricted to times bookings and you know, does that make sense?
No, it opens the possibility and I mean, I understand. Need to look into it.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilor Ranger.
Yeah, when I first heard this and that, I'm, I'm trying to think of, we're spending on at least the initial capital cost, matching $10 dollars to the grant. So this investment tax payers month. And as a counselor, as a counsel, to defend decision, if we go along with the restricted setup to describe. We tend to taxpayers that we just spent sixty-seven, whatever the number is, thousands of dollars to building and yet you as taxpayer, you know, can't do it unless you and I just wonder how council end that, perhaps the anti kind of kind of by which general public would be able to use it and I was this, of course, for example, you can use the course, it's got tax investment in it. But you've got to join the, join the club this weekend and pay a fee. That's what you're talking about.
That's the answer. Yes, I agree completely. We charge access to most of the facilities in town. And you just spent on a more over a hundred thousand dollars. Now the golfers made some money, so that's of course revenue using, but it'll tax our money.
And that, what you're proposing isn't really different than you do with the golf course.
In my mind, and the swimming pool, the library, the golfers or the ice rink. That's just my position, opinion. I to you decide, is it relevant and reasonable?
I think that's, that's the question is, is it defendable to, to our readers?
But think?
What do I think?
Is it defend?
I'm still thinking.
Also other comment?
I'm relatable. I was, I was there. There's some more at the end, you have to.
I'm gonna go. So yes, I have thought this too, because we've talked to this and I like the yeah, drawing, you ever such that you'd name was very similar to this. I think the great idea. Think the thing is, so we have to remember this was on our docket. We had set aside money, go ahead and surface that. And the, the pickleballers did come us, still wrote the but they have money in the game now-ish. And so it is less tire money. Because we got a grasp that's going toward, but originally we were already doing it, right? I, I think we're setting money if it was, was on person record, it was up there on the knew we had to either start mowing it or we needed to re-surface it. And so I, I so I think it's a good, um, only and I would say Lloyd would just see that as if say the Browns wanted on and my family just showed up, you know, could we come to the town office and get a coat or whatever to get into it? He might only concern, but I, yeah, it's a great idea.
Councilor Burton. Burton.
Lloyd, reference I read in your design and Alex and task and also create all the initiative is taking that terminal. My, my question is, an observation question, the model you're proposing Romania of, of two other facilities that are publicly owned and managed by a club. The first one used to take your quad side by side up to pole and community pasture. And now it's public owned facility, it's managed by an association, namely the Pauli Racing Association, spin to a private club, neither or I can go there. And I think like loss to the community as a whole. Another example that I'd say you're fairly certain to is Agro Dome, which for a facility missed on rest. The Agro Dome is owned town is managed by a club, the Leverage Society. Had that membership and who's allowed to have membership and who isn't, is a significant issue of tension. And when I look at all of the facilities, what you're posing land in mind, closest to the cities and the result has been, one case wildly negative and others somewhat negative. And I or if you have something in mind that would was correct that you know, while good people are driven, the next group, it would turn to a situation where it ultimately creates a lot of division and homogeneity, restricted use, law of use, or public facility to public in general. That was a question, Boyd. Does he having in mind to help that eventual
Chair. Thinking, um, and our thinking is that this would written between the town and Carson County Ball Association. Um, we are a non we officially register in Alberta. So we have to adhere to regular things and it and we would be able to apply because of vehicle for more and more CFAPs over the years. And why I think it's really good to do it now together. Because the two things that either those examples you said are serbic different, they don't have, I believe written agreement with the town.
The exercise.
And if not hearing it, then why isn't county fixing that or, or solving the dilemma? Would recommend that you nail us down firmly so that in this generation and the future generations, you know, except for but the, if think that in that out that community pasture is that similar coming and it's not even close, it's so complex out there. But it is a club, a use, you're right. That, but there's a hard other asset. Down with the agreement. Hey, then you tell us and we'll, we'll correct it. That's my, my answer to your thoughts. Know if that's satisfactory, but I, I think just thinking of feet here, that there's lots of ways you can ensure that your sins are us. This is your interested group for the tennis courts, not Joe up there competing with his idol trying to get the one to access the court. There's nobody else. You can either and ask how people play on those courts. There's nobody, but we are every day. So we are your first citizens that you should worry about, not the possibility and potential of somebody's gonna come it can't access it just for the rights to be a, nobody's named Karen in the group, a Karen and complain.
Councilor Ken, then Councilor Quinlan, then Councilor
I was gonna appreciate you coming Lloyd, talking, updating the association. I know you guys are passionate. I love the game. And I know Wayne, the bigness down zone, my parents and then to it down or how when they get there. Um, every day I go work at the hospital, the courts are usually packed with what most guys are mornings, but I love the idea of the model. Um, I think we should be on board with this. And I have, have all six pickleball courts or whatever to box in, I'm buying with four. I don't at all, all of the single pickleball courts be locked away, locked away, away. Have a different access. I think we'd have some of the pickleball, send the tennis court accessible to the having to grow a person. But I agree that it's an association. I think that even for I mean, when I'm, when I'm of the people's age, the court will be, the courts will be the same condition. I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't a anyways, I'm saying, I think I think that was suggesting that the courts will last for a very, very long time. And then then cement that we don't have to redo it again in 20 or 15 years. So, um, I agree with the model. I just agree with the, all the pickleball court being secured and this they have to go through someone. I some of that should be.
I have some closing thoughts, but I'll chapter or go now, whatever you want.
Comment on, on the Agro Dome, Agro Dome is locked, but at least here to be able to get faster access to it. Tennis, I've been watching this, new year will come tonight. So I've been looking around a little bit. And fair enough, I drove by the day on, I was in black, I think. And there's a mother, son, the bench with they're on their bikes, they're skating, skating, climbing over the fence. Like you said, they and mother was sitting right there, they turned it into playground because it's in there. Also to by the new basketball courts, they're beautiful, except there's garbage, garbage coming right the kids won't pick the garbage up. At least if you guys are taking care of it, we know the garbage is getting picked up. So you got to point there when there's no, no supervision, we're watching it, it can actually happen. That again, I'm sure for six court, four, but I, I kind of like the idea that you'll take care of it and then that direction anyhow, you guys are ones that are using it. So, and one more thing. I steal like county from this up there. How about getting those guys up for it too?
So there's, there's, I've been county twice and I've seen first favorite responses. And so Craig now will be taking county. Yes, if you're yeah, if your comes out, you say, look, what you want or dream old is much over the budget. We're me and sure, but, but we, the county up for contribution. They are favorable. They have so in the past two times I've been there, um, the council members and large contingency that are, that are related to them on our pickleball playing. So yes, it's it. And we all attention to this money ourselves, personal donations and terms and fees to allow us help build with you the right facility, build it once.
Hey, Councilor Brandon and Mayor Crone.
So my understanding is the counselors are concerned with the joint use agreement idea or a policy. The way I see it is it's a living document that is reevaluated every year, just like we did as council. When we did the bike park, we looked at the bike park and we said, they brought it, they were excited about it. We gave opportunity, they got money for it, they did work, they're taking care of it, picking up the garbage. They're doing all sorts of incredible things and we are a growth element to the town of Arizona. And so that to me is fantastic. And I see this is at, this is if he, as Karen's consent, I don't use it, just like we have with lots of lots, but we have a few joint use agreements there and we'll make sure the living documents will be about it, they're coming back every year and we're looking at it and we're saying, well, that didn't work or you know what's work or whatever either side of it. I think we're just smarter for it. I think something worth looking at and tweaking of it, what's for, for or six score, you know, there's something you look down at, look down the that building, right? I'm all about.
So just to go back and back and what LeCopp was term of addressing that proposal to counties very important to our town because it was a very difficult with the county regarding recreation facilities. First, there was no desire of the county to, to help us with any of our muted of the facilities are county redent. So for us extremely I couldn't really say that loud enough that in order for us, when we renegotiate the next that's an inter municipal cooperation framework to have that built and with procuring et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you. We will.
Can Councilor Green?
Um, I'm sure you thought about this, paid attention to the, the growing of pickleball, H plus five primarily the people that play and incidence of injury, um, is considerably high. I watched an NBC news about the date, the United States in terms of fairly significant, you know, doctor officials injuries are considered or discussed liability insurance. Now, how does that direct to this?
Thank you. And I think that might be, guess, kick of all reason, do it. So if we have, now let's allow a, a connection, connect all the dots in this. We a club, because if we have a club, every member of the club automatically has insurance for injury. Through Alberta Football Association, Canada Ball Association. So the fees going, all of that bustle money in the pot would be about $5 per person here. That automatically insurance issue for liability. We're not a make club, not gonna partner with you. If, if town doesn't come to party with us, if you say, no, it's too risky or whatever reasons you come with, oh, it's too many courts, we don't like elusive use, we don't like any of us, we're oh, we're just gonna make, then this club doesn't form. We don't get a membership base and I'm not not raising an ultimate here. I'm telling you the facts of the matter. That doesn't have a club. Because there's no reason to club. So by having a benefit of a club, then people join the club, then have a base membership, then they have insurance use. Now, if they pay a fee, a daily fee if whatever we said, then they're a part of that insurance. whatever we said, then they're a part of that insurance so in fact, you cover injury liability being a club. And that is part of the Canadian Health Association membership gives insurance for that, so our is we get a club, that gives a membership, that takes the courts, by having a club on tournament and that brings people down and that takes care of the city and that also has the benefit. We like that idea, everybody puts in wins, you town, doesn't have to so we're asking of you, I know they don't know this but what I'm asking is that pursue to build it right one's concept, we are kind of at cross purposes with town staff, their purpose, any project oh, because it's taxpayer money, it saves money and our purpose is to build it right. In save money, their proposals and their objectives are to as frugally as they can and thank you that, installing that in, that's your job, ours to build it right, we would like to a, a, an opportunity to get this thing and figure it all out, so we is the right thing to build, that allows us to pursue and have the right thing. In addition, provide for a Carson County Ball Association to be partner and managing and return for that trip and management, allow us to not drift, the drift is so much to give acts on a quested base to those who would like to use it, so there isn't random uncontrolled, unfettered access, but it would be similar to Spring Pool Golf Court. Aides.
Took a point of, for me to finalize my part today. The answer to insurance issue is interesting, I, I think there be, unless it worked out, those people that wanna play, for example, in the courts that, who, who are the, Councillor, just talking about necessarily want to pay the $50, get the insurance, could be a, could be a loophole in the insurance coverage that we might have to devote, the other thing is you could do all this your own, you, you could put a loan without you can lease your land. You know, be agreed, I mean.
Okay, uh, any further questions?
Well, it took a lot more than I thought you guys asked question, I was done in 15 minutes, but thank you for
Yeah, I appreciate your, uh, thoughts and your presentation was awesome, I remember thanks for coming.
It's covered it, Tom, and sure, if you're in New York, anything else
You can last 18 minutes.
18, you want with me and I'll be back in minutes. Do you want him?
Yeah, I make him to recess for five minutes.
There you go, pull this up on that.
For council, um, so back, we are level one, phase or stage one, the water action, which is just asking people I add a couple just to your agenda page, which we're just showing, um, the bio we have in the different ages and what trigger them, I also put the most recent report of water life forecast, which they hadn't done September yet, we're still in August, um, the probable percentage of average between 30 and 68 St Mary's, um, our trigger to go to little three restrictions is 60% 36, so we have every reason to, and this is one of just form unit, by those, we could jump really heavy water restrictions, however, I'm talking probably other with, uh, and our raw water reservoirs right now are full and consumption's come way off cooler weather and so even conversations starting with Curtis was reservoirs are full, we're not seeing a head draw or a treatment so we have an appetite to go more strict of water restrictions, two reasons, is it's trying to get the gardens finished out, keep them green and two is we have to enforcement end up, we have to now go and look for infractions on water restrictions and we just weren't prepared to, to do that, the matter is we um, water reservoirs are, and so when we went to level one, we were 92% and we're having some troubles at the same intake with the few, we're able to unsteady out of the St Mary's we have been for a few weeks and so currently falls, our current position is that we don't, from our level one, uh, or conservation.
This isn't the side you were about to say, damn today, it's the lowest one since the eighties and stuff, they're still pumping, they'll water out.
And, yeah, well, they had to stop that, that a real
Okay, Councillor Green, then Councillor Lee.
Uh, the issue intake, is that an injury solution works or what do you do with that? You and I talked a little bit about details, you guys don't know, you know, enter the CAO and just
So I don't have, I don't think the final, um, the is the backwater pipe collapses that are HDP, so, but they don't know where 14 kilometers or something that might be, so they're looking to start analyzing between air valves, see if they so no, but right now, I said we're pumping and actually we can pump out of the of yesterday to it, came as the, we don't want to and we certainly need to, but those numbers come a little bit so unless you, Councillor, feel something about changing, I just stated comfortable with, just as people be cautious, be prudent, we have good storage the temperature for next two weeks in the low twenties, maybe, so we're not seeing days, um, we require quite a water next week at the golf course, uh, they're doing a big irrigation, all the greens, they have to water them quite as, as we're just fine, we are on all irrigation, the raw water reservoirs right now, we're not doing level irrigation, they did some restriction greatly used the flows, they removed their restrictions, but the turbidity and the mud water from turning down is pretty bad right now, so we're just pulling a raw water as people that were, we're fine, so we're comfortable changing status quo.
One last thing, fall means that we'll replenish the river a bit before to drop off in the dead of
It's, it's fully snowmelt.
Next spring.
Yep.
Three or three inches after us, we, the Mary's and waters, I was there, it was yeah, so the farmers on Mexico snow, so we'll be okay.
I'm just gonna say we're at time of year also where people are slow, they're gage it out, they're watering on raw water down. I mean, I'm not, I think we're okay, cause I know, but something I think we're
We did, by the way, it was a lot for spray part, um, temperatures cool, it just is such a consumer water held under that during the, the heavy heat, we tried to keep that goal, now the forecast mild
You're back at school.
To shut that down.
I just wanted to, you brought the spray, is the spray not re the water? Was it like a thing that they, okay.
Looked at, well, it was a very complex issue. And we couldn't really do it with the amount of
Then like Harvards do it, right?
No, it was, it was very complex. About an environmental problem also, an issue also about another what, now, but we look into it, well, our first, it was
Thank you.
Didn't do it.
Other comments or discussion thought? Thank you Jeff for the data on that, uh, we'll now to six, uh, A, Mr. Juklanate has obviously done an awful lot of work with that and, uh, administration as well. So I think he will go through the high lock red areas, of course.
Any questions, Councillor, I had flight updates and any questions, I'm happy to answer, we'll just keep running away at them.
Realistic walk path, every year, all the time, keep the horse pooping on there.
Jeff, we were talking about restricting the way to access those paths, is that something we could look into to, so the whole I mean, there is a way, simple, it's not a very complicated process.
There's I shouldn't say there's a way, there's pretty much no practical way to restrict access of a civil ride or horse, all the way to higher cells, sort of the entire
Yeah, it took the road on there, I totally agree, but
Councillor Ken, we
I was gonna ask, did you, an update on the Gullivers, the clubhouse, how, what's that?
Uh, yeah, I can't.
I know I've talked a bunch.
Sure.
Good, let them.
So in, one of your plans was a house a week's night on track south winds chugging, um, so they are, they're obviously peak season, these can be like, they had their planned out, as they should have, that's right, uh, but the first thing is, uh, goal is that we have the location to treat this month, so that we can get utilities run before freeze, so that the minute they can go in the spring ready to go now, there's a bunch of work in between now and then, one is designing designs and one is um, putting it to tender, so we know number's gonna be, so the goal is also to go to tender in January, so just after most, we'd like to put it up tender and we will have a, we'll have an exact number for so that's currently the tough frame, um, I hope we were, were going
That was their recommendation, because, uh,
thing would get in January.
You're done, do it right.
Yep, okay.
Thank you, okay, any other
Jeff, the, um, dog and show, the, the main street, um, what the facility is doing, can you give us a quick, uh, brief as what they're doing and they're posing the show to businesses?
So I just got a new up today, I haven't really over it that close, but September 12th from today, they're being doing, it should be getting stuff out tomorrow, I think, a week today is the plan here in the council room at clock to have a, a consultation session with all merchants and business owners on town. By invitation, you know, I mean, it'll probably the block on your side, the whole down sector, uh, should get an invite I think other people come, I don't see anything like that, but, uh, they specifically want to talk to all the area next day at two o'clock here at the council room, so I'm hoping that go tomorrow.
So, and we're doing them, AEs you, this would look like necessarily, we think in this council chamber, I, I, I choose but I'm not gonna say, well, wait a second, but I guess that with a feature that are still on drawing to get shown, are bicycle lanes and the mid street crossings are banned.
So they're, they've got them all, they've got different variations, so they can feed back on each of those items, yeah, that's correct.
We haven't ranked in as a collective body We haven't ranked in as a collect body this group yet. That's, that's what I, I mean, when the council had a look at it before it was shown to the public. Um, I don't you know, a project killer or anything like that, but um, I guess I'm personally up on bike lanes. Do we, do we have them or not? Get to be interested here from business side. I think it's point we gotta inch the public too, right? Okay.
That was the intention.
Businesses for the public and some chime in. Okay, thank you.
Who's here?
Yeah, who's here? If you want to take a longer break.
Okay, any other comments there? Let's move on. Six B, the Alberta municipalities resolutions.
We can work at Santa Ana.
Regarding the resolution, I think we should good look at them. There is quite a few that are important to us. There are a lot of it regarding regarding Alberta health issue and some that are interesting. So please add them and next time we have chance, maybe last meeting in September, which can Yeah, this week we should maybe have a look at them. There's some I think are interesting.
Okay. And then the second question there.
Too late to speak to this. I wouldn't mind being able to with that person till we can go over if there are any model and you know, it's not get up and read the preg you as a little more, more context. So they're where are we going? So Jen, councillor, councillor, councillor Ranger. And so it's connect that I'll, I'll work that person. So where do you go?
You have about five minutes. Two minutes, two, two minutes can present the thing in, uh, in every
So it our pitch.
Two minutes.
We have to talk. So the remember from previous discussion is our ability to pay for, um, infrastructure.
This is a library's resolution that we're putting forward. This is a library included in I C F, yes. No, no, that's the next item we're gonna talk about. You're not far off.
I guess placed in the agenda.
Yeah. This is live for being included in I C F for the next and I ample material. We'll get down to two minutes on this.
And you truly need a good little crib and as much as you know it.
How many ocean take crap? Not somebody otherwise not to get through. You don't look at me. Anything, but I don't.
Do we have a motion councillor?
Uh, we have a motion to
You have it.
Have the motion.
As far
Thank you, the motion.
No, the motion was made.
Work away, I don't care.
So, I mean, is Council Brown up to it? What she can express here on it.
Oh, she can express. I'm happy to do it.
You're much more gentle than I would be.
All right.
Maybe you don't need to study.
Okay.
So, that's my, I'll leave with Council Brown and we'll put the script together.
I had Counselor Pivoy do it because I didn't want my accent to give me away.
It's all good. My accent will be just fine.
Well, I would volunteer, but I'm pretty sure the microphone would be too high for me.
I got you.
So, anyway, what hand and who will present and administration can present at that meeting?
Yes, administration. So, who can...
I volunteer.
Mayor Cronin. Last time when we did the presentation, Jeff took the lead on the presentation. I presented Jeff to the panel, whoever was there, and explained that he had done most of the research technical and that he was best suited to do the presentation. And honestly, every presentation he did, he was complimented for the quality of the presentation. So, I would say the no-brainer is allow Jeff to do it.
He sat there nodding my head.
He sat there nodding my head while you were talking. There were two of them.
And so, I really, and we went to the justice, the surgeon, and it was just a person from council who is there, one of them present Jeff and move on, let him do it.
And, yeah, Jeff and I just talked about it and I agree with everything you said. I mean, based on my one ministerial meeting a year ago, Jeff did really, really well and Counselor Court and I just chimed in as appropriately. And I volunteer to go with Jeff on, because it's, the thrust of it is the capital, the ability to pay for capital infrastructure.
There we go. Okay, this, attend easy, F. In this meeting, September 28th, Thursday at 9:40 a.m. So, are you, Counselor Court, are you planning to attend as well or...
Probably not that meeting. We don't need us all to be there. Yeah, Jeff and I could.
Counselor Granger's going to go.
I have to send beforehand.
That's, there'll be sessions going on down there, so I just can go to the sessions if you're going to go to the...
Yeah. I mean, I want to go to the sessions too, but this is important, so.
Okay, great. So, now, 6D, the August 29th evacuation debrief, and Jeff has the update.
My portable mic, my portable mic just died, so I'm going to come up here for Counselor Burton's sake until my mic is back. I just wanted to give you a quick update on our event last week when we had to evacuate a chunk of the town. So, that was obviously my first evacuation. And while it was a minor event, I would say, we learned a lot. So, there was certainly some things that internally we figured out with our partners, with emergency services and even with Atco Gas, I've met with them since. And so, we've learned some valuable lessons there. So, really quick, just, so we're all on the same page. There was a vehicle that hit an abandoned gas riser in an empty lot, which caused a pretty good geyser of natural gas to shoot into the air. The proximity to the Chinook Lodge in the villa created some immediate concerns. And also, those big buildings have air handlers which pull air, outside air, into the building, which was heavily contaminated with natural gas. So, Danny Melvin was the first on the scene with his crew. I was called, I got in there and met Danny. Jill came down, the office, Shem came down to the office. And so, we were kind of working on cell phones through that. One of the first priorities was getting everyone out of the Chinook and the villa, which isn't taken lightly. That's not easy on a lot of those folks. It's, a lot of them aren't sure what's going on.
And they're sleeping.
And it was late. So, this was happening after 11 o'clock that night. And we quickly set up a reception center at the stake center, the West Stake Center. This building was not deemed to be suitable because it was in line with the prevailing wind. And so, we did not want to do that. You know, the first perimeter we evacuated was 330 meters. If the wind came up or it got any worse, we had to go to 600 meters. And then, this building fell inside the 600 meters. So, we went to the West Stake Center. Jill was able to find people to get that open quickly. And Mayor Cronin was able to pop down and we put up a quick makeshift reception center, knowing and hoping that it was short term. So, we weren't too worried about food, we weren't too worried about, you know, long-term lodging or anything at this point. Back at the site, we started with, we called out Public Works and Water staff. They got barricades and began barricading off the perimeter that was determined and manning those barricades. We had help from Mid Rivers Fire Department, which is the villages. We had the town, we had Blood Tribe Police, we had RCMP, all of them helping with both manning the roads and also on door-to-door knocking doors. As you know, we sent out a, our local alert system, so we didn't go to the provincial one yet. We did our local alert system, which was just notifying people. And then, we went to a, why am I forgetting all the terms now? But the one that interrupts, it's called a broadcast interrupt, so it interrupts radio and it interrupts all that and goes, pushes through your cellphone whether you ask for it or not. So, we did that. We had really good cooperation and response from all the citizens. We didn't have any hiccups. We had one person who, for medical reasons, couldn't move. They were actually really close to the issue too. So, we simply wrote down their address as a shelter in place, that if it escalated, we were going to have to figure that one out later, but that they were going to be okay in the short term. The wind was, it was such a beautiful night. I mean, it was calm and it was warm. The wind would slightly move a little bit. It would come from the north for a second, then it would go back west. And that was okay because it was so mild. We got the handy bus, thankfully, and that actually reminds me, I need to talk to them about probably paying them a little bit for that service. So, we got the handy bus out to help with the folks whose families could not come get them from the Chinook. So, all the families were called from the Chinook. Many of them came and got their loved ones from the Chinook, took them with them. But there was probably still 20 or so that couldn't have anyone that come quickly. So, thankfully, Don Carlson had the handy bus and helped us get all those folks out. So, this went on, Atco arrived from Fort McLeod, and they began to assess where they could... Oh, sorry, Counselor Granger, go ahead.
Well, Atco was going to be my question. The only thing I heard from anybody was how long did it take Atco? And why don't we have an Atco person in town that knows where all these shut-off valves are, that it could have been done faster? That was the one comment I got.
Yep. And it's a good comment, by the way.
Yeah.
So, Atco's about 45 minutes. We, oh, we also had to get Leonard to turn the power out around that block so we didn't risk spark and that kind of thing, electrical issues. So, he had the power out for that block. Atco, one from Fort McLeod, one from Lethbridge showed up a few minutes later and were able to locate a shut-off in one of the neighboring yards, I believe they were. They got it contained, they got it capped off. They came back the next day and fixed it properly. So, it did raise questions about, we had people from the gas co-op, for example, who were willing to go in and do that. We had a firefighter who was a Calgary firefighter that lives in Cardston. He came out to help, who is, also happens to be a gas fitter. And he volunteered, and in both cases, Atco said, "No, we could not do it." And I can kind of understand why. But what it led to was, on last Thursday, I believe, I had a meeting with Atco, just to kind of debrief the whole incident. It was at their, they set up the meeting, they wanted to have the meeting. We had a great meeting. And we learned a couple of things. One is, there should not have been an active riser in an abandoned lot. And that is an interesting scenario because Atco had no record of a demolition permit for that house. So, internally, we have to look at why they weren't notified when the demolition permit was pulled. What happened there? Where was the...
It was a burned-down house, right?
Yeah. The house burned down four years ago. And so, it was pretty recent. And so, Atco had no record of that property, of ever there being a fire, or them needing to address their infrastructure. So, internally, we're trying to understand how we can make sure that the onus is on those residents to inform the utilities, but that obviously didn't happen. And so, how do we audit that? How do we make sure it happens? So, that was interesting because that infrastructure shouldn't have been there in the first place. That should have been gone. The second thing was, how do we develop some kind of mutual aid so that if there's local expertise that can tend to that leak, they can immediately do it? And so, this was quite interesting to me. Atco's preference is that the fire department is the one that caps the line because they have the proper bunker and breathing apparatus gear to do it. And so, they are coming down and doing a training for all of our firefighters in the near future, and they are going to give us all the requisite equipment needed to deal with a service line rupture like that. Now, if it's something where, for example, the main was broken or something, well, that's just going to be outside what we can do. But where it's a low pressure, as this was, it's a low-pressure service line, but it's geysering, you know, 20 feet in the air, they're going to give us the tools and equipment and the training so that our fire department can administer to that.
So, that would alleviate the minor leaks, the major leaks?
Yes.
Like a main?
Yeah.
Which is way more dangerous.
Yeah.
We've got to wait 45 minutes for somebody to come from Lethbridge?
So, they do have mutual aid with the gas co-ops. They have mutual aid. They said usually it's the gas co-ops calling them. That's generally because they're the bigger entity. But they said in an event of a certain, of that, of a major severity, they would enact their mutual aid agreements with the co-ops. And so, they were, they're going to work through that a little bit too and look at what that means.
To be in place before the major thing happens.
Yep. I agree. But we are going to get some training here locally. So, they got that all tidied up. We waited a while for gas to dissipate, turned the power back on, and then notified the reception center to allow people to come home. Again, everyone was super cooperative. We didn't have any issues. We didn't have anyone angry. We knew it was super inconvenient. It was 1:15 in the morning or something by this point in time.
Oh.
So, it was, yeah, maybe even later, Mayor? I might be off there.
Yeah, of course. It was later. You know something? It was amazing when we did the announcement that the barricade were coming down and very shortly they would have Jill give them the okay to go. Man, you could see them all stand up and clap and... I never seen a group that happy to go back home to their bed.
You always have the questions after is that, was the, was it necessary to do what you did, right? So, that's what you're always going to question, right?
I think you did the right thing.
And yet, at the same time, the consequence of not doing something, in the worst case, unbailing itself, is absolutely terrifying as well.
Somebody light a cigarette in that area and blow everybody to kingdom come.
I really want to congratulate you and your... I really want to congratulate you and your staff because honestly, the speed at which they were on site to help you was extraordinary. So, I cannot thank them enough. Jill included and Shem and all the rest of the group that was there for all the help that gave you that night. And I really, I really want to do something for them.
And Danny, she called them six times, none of them woke up.
Yeah.
Overall, it went really well and they were, but I looked at her hand and her knuckles were just black and blue from all the knocking.
Knocking doors, yeah.
I couldn't believe it.
We should have brought golf balls, I never thought about it.
Well, maybe, maybe. I mean, they had gloves, but it was, they were really excited to be getting people out. So, they were just hammering on those doors, but they...
You know, and it's always interesting as, from a community point of view, when those things happen, there was a Blood Tribe Police on duty and it was just like, what do you need? Can you come up to this street and patrol the intersection? You bet. RCMP, what do you need? You know, all, you don't have to beg anyone to come out and help, right? Like, all those people in that industry were there. Glenwood and Hillspring firefighters, guy, I won't mention his name if you didn't want to, but a Calgary firefighter who lived in town, saw a need, showed up. What do you need? What do you need me to do? Just stand at this intersection. Great, I'm on it.
So, are we, is it appropriate for us to send thank yous out to those people?
Feels more considerate than I am, but probably.
I feel like we should. My mom would say yes to this. I just think it would, I just think it's appropriate for us to those people that went above and beyond. I just think they really stepped up and that's a...
So, it was a good exercise. We learned a couple of things about rapidly putting up a reception center when you're not making that decision from the civic center. So, you don't have all the stuff with you right now, you don't have all the things. And then, I had Jill at the State Center and Shem was here, but Shem couldn't leave here because he was taking the phone calls and the Facebook messages and the emails. And so, we didn't want him to leave. And we just, we just learned a couple of things that weren't crucial but important.
You know, the only, you know, on social media, I noticed that one lady made a comment that she lived in the villa and they were told to evacuate. But she said, she claimed that they did not tell them where to evacuate to. So, she ended up just driving around in her car. But, yeah, just, so, Mayor Cronin.
Can you open the door and use your water?
Well, I want, as a side note, Jeff had given me a whole stack of, ton of paper with the logo and I had them on my desk for whatever reason. And I had a pile of pens that I snatched from the office all the time. That night, that night when I called him and he said, "Go to, go to open the State Center, Reception Center," I took all those papers and all those pens.
Have you given them out?
And we, we had, there was about 20 people there. And honestly, to carry on with what you said, the amount of volunteerism that was given that night, you know, there was former Councillor Pivoy that just said, "Mayor Cronin, what do you want?" I said, "Get me tables out, block the two entrances so we can make sure everybody is taken care of. Get chairs, set up chairs in no matter of time." And Jill was outside and on a corner taking names. And so, we brought Jill in and the rest of the crew in. It was absolutely amazing, really. I was really, I was really amazed at the way people are willing to work together in an event like that.
So, a question then, as councillors, it would have been appropriate for us to go to the State Center and assist in any way, is that correct?
So, in a larger scale, in a larger scale emergency, I knew this was a temporary reception center, so in a larger scale, the answer is no, actually, Councillor Jensen. The answer is that you are there to send when I'll have, I need a spokesperson to give messages out to the people, but you're generally not right in the thick of it because all of a sudden, people are coming to you to say, "You've got to do something about my place. You've got to do something about this for me. I need you to pull your influence to do this for me." And so, it's actually best practice to keep you out of there. In this case, we knew, short term, some friendly faces, people they know, no problem.
In Whitehorse, they wouldn't let us near. You're just in the way.
Yeah, but generally, I would say no. No, you, if we, if we were set up on a more of a long-term, bigger event, we'd be set up here and if you wanted to be here, I'd probably have you down in my office in the committee room. And every so often, one of you would be giving messages to the media and to the residents. And because you're the elected official, you'd be giving prepared statements to the media.
But Jeff, one, the Kinoa fire was raging years back. The county asked you to open this building as a registration...
We did a reception center here too, yeah.
And we worked together for many, many hours that night. And, but then, EM, the emergency services came afterwards and were really setting us up a lot more.
And sometimes like this one, if I know I can find volunteers quick, I'm going to call you. And that one especially, Mayor, it wasn't our reception center, it was the county's. You were not their elected official. Right? So, the people that we were bringing in, you weren't their elected official.
Right.
So, it was a different scenario too. Yep.
Councillor Cameron? Oh, Councillor Burton, sorry.
A question, was the West State Center a pre-designated area or was it just the one that we decided was a good one?
So, it is a backup in our emergency management plan, but in this case, it was simply the one that was going to be least affected by a heftier west wind, frankly.
Two comments on that. One is, we should probably add the West State to our thank you list for using their facility. And then, even though a lot of us would take that for granted, that was available. The other, the other comment though is that, as you know, Jeff, each of the states, both of the states has an emergency, what's their name? Emergency preparedness person at a state level? Or a couple more typically. And, you know, as a member of the High Council, I've encouraged them to be in contact with you. That's just another resource that the town has to facilitate things or vice versa, right? If, anyway, just to make sure that we have that in mind, that there's some level of assistance there available as well.
So, you'll be pleased to know, Councillor, that Murray and Marion and I are meeting with both State emergency representatives in the next couple of weeks. She's actively setting that up as we speak.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? I just want to say that, you know, Jeff, I truly appreciated your updates on cell phones and whatnot. It was really helpful and I really appreciated your attentiveness to that, to let council know what was going on.
I want to surprise you, although I wondered, Councillor Brown, when you looked at your phone after it was all done, because you were in on that, saw like 60 text messages.
I wasn't home. I was on holiday and I was like, "Are we in labor? What's going on?"
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for number seven? Okay, the last, number eight, correspondence, there's some interesting ones there, especially 8B with the grant that came through for the pickleball court of $61,600. And then, the two, last two that are invitations to hospitality events during AB Munis. So, I, that concludes, so could I motion to go again?
Yeah, I mentioned, one question.
Paul Wender?